Twenty meeting to order. Please note that Governor Kemp has extended his emergency orders until December ninth, two thousand and twenty. Therefore, this meeting will continue to be held virtually into further notice. And it is being held under the Openset Meetings Act of Georgia. Thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, before we start, I would like to call Rowe, District One Commissioner Henry Mitchell III.
Present.
District Two Commissioner Kelly Robinson.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Torini O'Carthon.
Present.
District Four Commissioner Anne Jones Geider.
Present.
Ramona Jackson Jones Chairman present. Board of Commissioners, thank you so much again for being here this morning. And thank you public for being involved and engaging county government. Public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comment this morning?
No ma'am, no we do not.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on. Board of Commissioners, I'm trying to. We have, it's not robust, but it is one that is a little, it could be lengthy if I don't strategically work the mean. Approval of the minutes, Board of Commissioners, tab one through four, please be prepared to approve the minutes according to tomorrow. I ask that you review the minutes. And then also, we have a proclamation which is tab number five tomorrow. And it will be proclaiming November ninth, two thousand and twenty, Live Like Lisa James Lung Cancer Awareness Day in Douglas County. And that proclamation will be read by Jessica Frazier. And then also, we have a public hearing tomorrow, which is approval of an off-premise beer wine alcohol license for fresh food mark license. Joanna Marks Miles at ten, six hundred eighty-five Veteran Memorial Highway, Lithia Springs, three zero one two two. And that public hearing will be orchestrated by Ron Roberts. Ron, do you have a comment regarding this public hearing?
Uh, no ma'am, the applicant has gone through the RAS certification. It is a complete packet, Madam Chair. Everything has been done. The measurements have been taken. We are ready to have the public hearing. I think it's actually gonna be on Thursday morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on to our presentation, Ron, since you have the floor. This is a perfect time for you. We have one presentation this morning, Board of Commissioners, this scenic byway, one sixty-six presentation and request for resolution in support of application to G dot. Board of Commissioners, I ask you to hold your questions to the end of the presentation to allow us to move through this process today pretty seamlessly.
Allison Duncan's on the line. She's got the presentation we're gonna pull up and walk through. We've got eight slides. We're gonna go fast, 'cause I know you, I know you need to, to get to your regular business. This should not be a surprise to anybody. We've actually met with three of the commissioners already on this. This was a project work element that was identified in the comprehensive land use plan. And last week, Miguel kicked off the CTP, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And I was, I was on there as a stakeholder, so we've mentioned it. Um, the designation does a, let's see if we can get the, we've got a couple of slides to, to walk through. If we can, yeah. So, seeking a scenic highway designation can provide a catalyst for the development of a community vision. To create and not just promote a scenic route, these designations offer the communities an opportunity to engage in the, in the planning process and help shape the future. The designation process allows for communities to identify and develop strategies to help manage resources that are important to maintain. It's also, there's also an economic component to this, Madam Chair and Commissioners, good morning. There's the, the opportunity with the preserve coming online, Chattahoochee Riverland Study, identifying more and more accesses to the river. Just really felt like this was the appropriate time to go ahead and move forward with, with applying for the South Douglas Scenic Byway. As a scenic byway designation in the state. This is a good thing, 'cause we would also be included on all the state maps and welcome centers and things of that nature. We've got about, when I spoke about the different areas along this route, we have some slides we were gonna walk through that I think we've already shown, shared with Commissioner Carthon and with Commissioner Geider. Allison, you wanna walk through those, those, some of the historic sites and things like that that we've, we've actually identified?
Uh, sure thing. Uh, do you see the slides advancing now?
Yes.
Okay, so the map that you have before you here shows the proposed route of the designated byway. We are proposing that the byway start at the intersection of Highway one sixty-six and Highway ninety-two and kind of go all the way to the county boundary. So you can see the dark gray line is what we're proposing is the byway. Based on the criteria of the scenic byway application, we've also identified a series of agricultural, recreational, historic and cultural resources along the byway. Uh, and so, to Ron's point, I'll share a little bit of that with you now. I have just about three slides to walk through. And I apologize, there seems to be a delay on my end for the slides advancing. So, here we go. So looking at the section there between Highway ninety-two and kind of right.
You talked Christian mean last night, I was like, mm.
I'm sorry?
Somebody, if, if everyone just mute your microphones.
That would be Bobby Holmes.
All right.
Should be good, go Allison, thank you.
Okay. Uh, to jump back in. And there where the old Hamilton ferry is located, um, you can see we've identified a number of resources that we think would qualify this for a scenic byway. Including the View of Lodge, close proximity to Sweet Water State Park, particularly through the proposed, proposed trail corridor that is running between Bass State Park, Underwaters Park itself, as well as several agricultural resources, urban farms that are growing in. That kind of move. Then back.
We're having some technical.
All right, so as we continue on down the byway, yeah, so again, I apologize. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, all right. So moving on down the proposed route of the byway, again, a number of historic resources and agricultural resources. Uh, one of the ones that I would highlight is that the large park that Southern Conservation Trust is working to develop at the old Bear Creek Golf Course, as well as the new park that the county is working on, Pumpkin Town Park. Um, we think these are gonna be amazing amenities for the community as they come online and I think would be a real asset for scenic byway designation. And then advancing to the next slide. So, as we continue the route of the byway to the county line, a number of resources that you're already aware of, the reservoir is a tremendous asset. Basket Creek Cemetery is one of the very few national register listed cemeteries in the state of Georgia. That's a real asset for Douglas County. Again, several other working farms and parks and recreational opportunities that we have in that area. Um, so I will turn it back over to Ron to share anything else that he wanted to about the, the specific sites that we're proposing as a part of the application process.
Thank you, Allison. I, I think for brevity's sake, like I said, everyone should be kind of familiar with, with scenic byway. I think my predecessors had, had toyed around, two predecessors had toyed around with, with submitting it. It's not been done. We think it's a, a good idea. We think it's gonna help preserve the area. We have identified some historic resources that we would like to include in the application. And we would seek support of the resolution to move forward with actually putting in for the scenic byway designation. And, and begin the work. It's a lot of work on staff. There's no financial obligation to the county at this time, and I don't know exactly what that would be, but we'd be meeting with community representatives. We already have some stakeholders from several commissioners and moving forward with actually holding those meetings and moving forward. So at this time, I think we're, we're open for questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Ron and Allison. Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Ron and Allison? Thank you so much, Ron and Allison. This morning, we're gonna move on to our.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson.
It took me a second, hold on, here I come. All right, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
All right, yes, I, I do. Though I, I know this is, we're trying to move this agenda along, it, it's during times like this where you, you should do things like this. With just planning and forecasting for the future of my planning, and I, I can't let this one go. You're right, Manager Roberts, we've been working on this since I came on board. We've had these conversations with, with a couple of commissioners prior to all the ones that are here. Uh, and, 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 and they, they never got to read what that thing represents. And I know a lot of people talk about, well, there's not much in Douglas, and it's like, okay, but it's what we make it. You not get the raw land that's here? You get how beautiful that, that, that southern corridor is, all the way from, from the corner of ninety-two all the way through three and four? And it is, how do you harness it? Right, now I appreciate what you guys are doing, which is, you're moving us along, because people talk about, unless they value it, don't do nothing for it. Don't not invest any time and energy into it. I mean, that, that's our water conservation, that's our future development in District Four, like, okay, guys. And I'm, I'm happy to hear the administration's audience has talent in place, you know, to, to get this. To take care of the areas and be able to, to, to bring together something that, you know, they hear the hearts of leadership, but you've gotta be able to translate that into a plan. And, and I really appreciate that. So, that being said, so now, from ninety-two, that was my, from ninety-two out, all the way to, all the way out to, care. All the way out. How many miles is that? Twenty-five miles, thirty miles, a marathon, two? Can you tell me the distance, please?
I don't know the distance right off the top of my head. I don't.
I can address that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Allison.
I can address that, that question. Um, we've included this information in a, in a copy of the data sheet and the statement of significance. Um, so it's three point six miles between Highway ninety-two and one sixty-six and fifteen point four miles, excuse me, uh, for the, the rest of the length to the county boundary.
All right, so it's that, a little less than a marathon, right, all the way out. Did I hear that right? All the way out. All right, so, and at one point, and I know this is part of the broader comprehensive transportation point. At one point, we, we looked at investing into this and, and creating bike trails and blue trails and all of these, these types of things. And I, I get that, the agriculture, um, and obviously the farms that come along there, and, and maybe there is a, a commercial aspect to it. But it, I'm here, I'm glad to hear this is probably more of a deliberate activity. I appreciate commercial people coming here and investing in us, but that's on their terms. This begins to create an atmosphere in which, okay, we get to pick what we're looking for, almost like with our economic development. We pick the corridors, we pick those sectors that we went after, high tech, et cetera. So, again, I, I just got, okay, it's time to go to another level. And, and I appreciate the, the thought leadership around this one right here, like, okay, guys, don't, don't drop that. District Four, you guys got this. District Three, okay, guys, y'all understand this. Now, begin to formulate what this needs to be for the future. And it's when and how would you do this? And weigh in. Don't let this, don't let people who want to invest in us dictate our terms. And we appreciate their picking their land, but you, you can at least establish, all right, this is designated as this. This is versus getting into a negotiation, well, you, you're sort of late to the party. And so I, again, I'm encouraged, Madam Chair, by your staff and pushing this and bringing this before us to give consideration. I'm sure my others may, may or may not have the opinion, but this one is something that's always been in my heart. I, I, I know the importance. I mean, it's our future. I mean, District One, we get it, we know how important they are to the county. I mean, obviously, that's the county seat, it's important. All roads lead through District One, and I, I get the economic engine of District Two, and I get District Three, our water, our conservation, I get District Four, all raw land. And I, I get it. Now pull it all together and make it work. So that's all I gotta say, Madam Chair. I yield the floor. Thank you. I'm good for now.
Okay, thank you so much. If we're gonna move on, if there are no other comments. All right, tab number seven, County Administrative Business, Authorization to Approve the G dot Mowing and Maintenance Agreement for the I twenty landscaping and the gateway signage and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. County Administrator Mark Teal.
Um, yes ma'am, this is a typical Georgia TOT maintenance and mowing agreement as a result of the I twenty landscaping project and the gateway signage. So before we can get started, we have this maintenance agreement that needs to be approved, and we have a, we have a bond that we're working on. We're trying to get that one, um, removed, and if not, we'll bring that back to the board.
Okay, any questions for the board or, from the board or comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yeah, all right, so I, I trust this is part of, part of the priorities of the county as far as duplication. I, I, I trust that this is part of the, you know, sort of that bigger priority, just sort of keep things clean. Um, it's what citizens have been asking for, is which is our reasonable service, can you, can you clean this up? I get the corridors, I, I get the exits, but again, one more time. Um, and I'm, I'm sure some of you have recognized, Madam Chair, had heard stated at the county recently, and, and it's something that I, I knew as portia is important. Right, so I, I appreciate what I'm hearing, that there's a deliberate commitment by the administration to fulfill what she's been saying for four years. And it's about being consistent, right? And, and so I, and I, I hear that we got a couple of problems with, I don't know what you said, we gotta remove the bodies, it may have to come before us. And I'm like, okay, how hard is it to cut grass? How difficult is this? And, and it's always, well, we gotta work through this, and it's like, I can't, come on, guys. We can build a jail in eighteen months, and we can't cut no grass. And, and so I, again, I, I think, we just get started on, on American. But I, I appreciate, again, Madam Chair, the floor for a moment. I, I stay within my three minutes. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Thank you, we're gonna move on to tab number eight. Tab number eight is under grants. We have three, three grants this morning, Board of Commissioners, that we're just bringing before you. Tab number eight is Authorization to Accept the Family Connections Grant Award in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars for the period July first, two thousand and twenty, through June thirty of two thousand and twenty-one. For the Douglas Corps to authorize the chairman to sign all related documents and to amend the budget. Director Jennifer Kane.
Yes, ma'am, this is the grant that we get every year for Douglas Corps. And as stated, it's in the amount of forty-three thousand dollars for them to operate. Pretty straightforward.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Chairman Robinson.
And I promise, only had one cup of coffee. All right, so, Madam Chair, this is the question. This is more for the broader board, which is, as we talk about grants. And it's, it's about evaluating performance and outcome. And so, and, and again, I'm using Core only because, and I'm not gonna apply this to each of the other ones, but Core is something obviously we've taken a look at over the past couple of years. And we've asked for like midterm reports and different things like that. And I, I still think that there's a, there's a time to raise the standard of evaluation. In other words, like, why are we keep pursuing these grants? Or should we change these grants? Why do we keep looking at these contracts versus changing them? And we as commissioners would like to have, at least I would like to have, I mean, a more consistent, not saying that people are not providing. I'm saying a consistent evaluation of, well, are we getting what we're, I mean, I don't know, we keep, they keep giving us the money, but it's like, okay, I get it, we apply for it, we get it. But there's no measurement. So I, I, sometimes I wonder, are we, are we being effective? Now, I know this one has to do more with operations, but I'm speaking to the broader one, so I don't have to come back to it, uh, to the statement, which is, it's just, where's the measurement? Where's the outcome? Where, and, and again, maybe they're tucked away within each of these agencies and, and what they do. We just don't have enough visibility. All I see is that we're rubber stamping grant applications or receive, applying for grants, receiving grants. And there's no real like, okay, okay. And, and so it's just those moments. It's how you bring forth your narrative in this exchange, right? Because in the absence, I'm sure the public is like, well, yeah, you drive. Where's the, it, it's the mechanics of what we're doing. And it's how we're viewed. It's like, okay, are we just rubber stamping? Is there real measurement checking? I'm held to a, a standard, I get it. And so likewise, everything associated with that measurement should be consistent. So, anyway, I'm gonna let that go, 'cause I think that as we get into, obviously, the budget retreat process, um, as we get into our, the whole budget adoption, though going into next year, I, I think, I'm, at least I'm gonna be fancying something that says, uh, I, there needs to be a higher standard, and it needs to be consistency. Uh, and I, I just think that we're, and this is not about you, Jennifer Kane, this is more of our own, Board Commissioners, like, okay, guys, is this, is this good enough? Uh, as, as a measurement, I mean, are, are the citizens getting what they're supposed to be getting out of this? Or do we sort of veil it behind and just, just don't say nothing?
Crazy.
Just don't say nothing. So, anyway, you guys get it. Um, I just want something to, to consider as we go into this, this, this tail end of the next two months. It's like, okay, like, let's take this to a whole nother level. All right, that was three minutes and twenty seconds, Madam Chair. I yield. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Jennifer, can you respond, Director Kane, to some of the concerns that Vice Chairman Robinson has? I know that you do keep some metrics and some information and some statistics and data. We just haven't probably, well, I know we haven't had the opportunity to deliver. And that would be something that I'll be looking, going forward, maybe once a year, twice a year, a comprehensive report just to give the Board of Commissioners an idea of what's going on in those particular areas before, again, quote unquote, before they rubber stamp anything. So can you share what you have placed?
Yes, ma'am. You know, with, with the grants, we are constantly having to provide reports back to that grant source. You know, some are quarterly, some are yearly, uh, there's constant information being shared back to them. So that's very easy for us to accomplish and pass on. I think it's a great idea. Um, it's good for us too to show what work we are doing with this money, so definitely something we need to do.
Okay, thank, thank you so much. And County Administrator, I know you're driving it. I just threw it out there. Thank you so much, Jennifer. We're gonna move on to tab number nine, Authorization to Accept the Felony Drug Court Grant Award in the amount of forty thousand eight hundred and nine dollars from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council to provide funding for a part-time based manager and amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Tim Pruitt.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. This is a new grant for us. This is a pass-through grant from CJCC. We've never had this before. This is in response to our growing population in the accountability courts. We have eighty-two active participants in our drug court right now. And this part-time case manager position will supplement the full-time case manager, manager position we already have. That case manager position is supervising more people than they recommend, and this will satisfy that need.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, pretty self.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Carthon, I think I heard you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Pruitt, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
Good. Is there a match that is needed from the county for this particular grant?
Yes and no. There is a match, but it's actually already accounted for in my salary, so there are no additional budget dollars needed from the county for this money.
Okay, so when the, when this is amended, it will come strictly from you all's budget?
That is correct.
And did you say this was a part-time or a full-time position?
Part-time.
It's a part-time position, okay. And, uh, how many caseworkers do y'all have in the Drug Accountability Court?
So Drug Court, I have one senior case manager. In our whole court program, I have a second case manager. So this will be our third case manager position, which will be a part-time position.
Which will be a part-time position, okay. And so what is, you, you said there are eighty-two participants now. What, what is usually the amount? You said we've grown. From what to what?
We have, actually, during COVID, we have grown exponentially. We were at fifty-two participants at the beginning of March. And so, we have continued largely through the investments we've made in technology. Uh, we actually never missed a day of court, and we never missed an hour of treatment. And we were able to continue to bring people out of jail into treatment during COVID, which is something that is unique in the country. Uh, we actually provided a nationwide webinar on how to continue operations during COVID, not too long ago, with Thermo Fisher Scientific, which was a, a great experience. So we have grown from fifty-two to eighty-two since March.
Got you. Thank you so much for the work that you all are doing, and thank you for actually applying for this grant and receiving it. I hope it'll be an ongoing grant. Thank you, Chairman Jones.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Carthon. Okay, if there's no other comment, we're gonna move on to your next item. Director Pruitt. Tab number ten, Authorization for the Felony Drug Court to Accept a Grant Award for the Office of Justice Programs in the amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars to be utilized to create a specialized opioid track within the current drug court program. Amend the budget and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Pruitt.
I'm actually gonna yield the floor to Judge McLean, who is with us right now, and I hope that you all can see.
Thank you, Judge.
You have a point presentation to have up.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Members of the board, um, I wanted to take a minute to kind of, I guess, introduce this exciting new program that we're gonna bring to Douglas County with your help to focus on the other pandemic. We all know about the coronavirus pandemic. We're all affected by it. Somebody asked me the other day, uh, what's it like? And I said, well, I'm having to change everything about the way I do everything. That's what it's like, and I suspect that it's that way for the rest of you. But in the meantime, there's another pandemic that's been going on. We have lost, I think, over two hundred thousand people to the coronavirus. And some folks have commented that the United States has five percent of the world's population and twenty percent of the world's COVID deaths. Well, if you show the next slide, Mr. Pruitt, um, the CDC not only helps manage our response to coronavirus, they also help manage our response to the other pandemic, the opioid pandemic. If you can shut, there you go. You see there, if you see that slide right there, that's from the CDC website. You can see CDC on the upper left-hand corner. And while the coronavirus pandemic has captured our attention, this other pandemic continues to rise. We're gonna have more people die from opioid overdose than from coronavirus. In the last several years, in America, we've had over four hundred thousand people die from drug overdoses. Most of those were attributed to the use of opioids, such as heroin, fentanyl, and pharmaceutical opioids. Uh, here's another interesting statistic that I came across. As I said, America has five percent of the world's population. It will shock you to learn that America consumes eighty to ninety percent of the world opioid supply. Eighty to ninety percent of all the opioids manufactured illicitly or on purpose worldwide are consumed in the United States. So we have a pandemic going on. And if Mr. Pruitt will show the next slide, that pandemic is particularly affecting Douglas County, Georgia. Uh, we do a lot of things well in this community, thanks to your leadership and the leadership of others. But one thing we're not doing as well as we should is our response to the opioid crisis. You can see by looking at that slide that we have, from time to time, been one of the highest counties in the state for opioid overdoses. We've hit the top five more than once. Mr. Pruitt gets data from, I think it's HIDA, High Intensity Drug Task Force. It's operated by the federal government, and so we get reports every month of what's going on with drug use and drug overdoses. And Douglas County keeps hitting one of the five highest county rates of drug overdose. So what we want to do with your help and your blessing is to attack that problem vigorously in Douglas County by bringing the first intensive opioid treatment program to our community with this grant from the United States Department of Justice. I wanna commend Mr. Pruitt. I wanna commend Teresa Gordy, his assistant. And I particularly wanna commend you guys, because you decided to let us hire an assistant for Mr. Pruitt, which you could have set note to. Well, she did the lion's amount of work on this competitive grant that I think only DeCav can. that I think only DeKalb County is getting, the same grant we're getting. Half a million dollars to fight opioid overdose and opioid addiction in Douglas County. Mr. Pruitt can give you the details, but I just wanna tell you that, uh, in my mind, every life is worth saving. Every life has value. And when you see people that are captured by addiction transform into law-abiding, taxpaying citizens, you get hungry to do it more and more. And we need to step up our response in Douglas County, and with this grant, we'll be able to. And it's not gonna cost the taxpayers of this county any money. There's no budget impact. We can match it with existing funds that are already budgeted. And the bottom line for me is that if we didn't get it, it's appropriated by Congress. It's gonna be spent. So, let's get it for the citizens of Douglas County. That's just what I wanted to say. I wanted to share my heart briefly, and I wanna thank you for your time.
And Board of Commissioners, I'll take over for just a second and finish out our presentation here. What you're looking at is actually a map of the state of Georgia, and it is showing in August of 2020, the five counties in the state of Georgia with the most overdose emergency room visits per capita. Now, that doesn't mean that we had more people going to the emergency room than any of the other counties. It means that per hundred thousand people in a population, our rate is higher than any one others. So, yes, absolutely. Fulton County will have more total emergency room visits. But what is important about this graph is that Douglas County, for every pair of shoes walking the streets, has a higher chance of overdose than Fulton, DeKalb, Cobb, Gwinnett, Rockdale, Clayton. Anyone except Bartow County, as it turns out. They were number one in August of 2020, and that was the most recent data that we have. And Judge was absolutely correct. We work on this through the Office of National Drug Control Policy. And so, the next slide that I'm showing is the actual rate, which for Douglas County is 34.5. That placed us at number two. It is important to realize that, again, this is for every person in the county, our rate of overdose surpassed 158 other counties. It's only Bartow that managed to beat us out in August. So, opioids are hitting this county, and they are hitting us hard. The feds have realized this. Public health has realized this. We realize this locally through the work that we do through the normal drug court. Our methamphetamine addiction has always been the highest drug of choice for our participants. It is the number-one treatment that we offer is for methamphetamine addiction. That is slowly being eaten alive by the opioid epidemic in Douglas County. It is on the rise, and we're trying to do something about that. How are we doing that? Our first step is a very significant BJA award. It is $499,997 to Douglas County for us to implement the court the judge mentioned. Our notice came out from October 16th, so this is two weeks ago, uh, where the Department of Justice talks about all of its grants, and we are listed in that public notification. But our second step is to start engaging our stakeholders. And the Board of Commissioners, you are our primary stakeholders because without your blessing and authorization, we can't begin this work, and we will watch more people die. And I know that your heart is for us to continue to do the work that we've done, and my heart is to give you the best results that we can for Douglas County. There is not another opioid court in the state. We will be the first, and that is important. We're gonna do that through some new innovations that haven't been done anywhere. Some of those are new cognitive behavioral treatments that we're not currently offering. So, a new treatment modality. Integrating medically assisted treatment of naltrexone and vivitrol into the opioid court from day one. We have very good technology and support, where we'll actually be able to conduct primary care assessments in the jail through telemedicine. Be able, through a private contract, be able to get that person an naltrexone prescription and have a smart medical dispensary that we can give to a participant that runs off a fingerprint that allows them to dispense their medication to keep them alive on a routine basis, that reports to us and lets us know how they're doing. We'll also be enhancing our case planning in a new way. We'll be adding additional supports. This grant actually allows for a full-time position that's, in addition to the positions we've already talked about today, we will likely be asking that grant to split that position up into part-time positions because we're gonna be doing some very late-night work in this. It is not commonly from eight to five that we find our most work done in the opioid crisis. A lot of times, it's 10 o'clock, midnight, 1 o'clock in the morning. And we're gonna be strategically placing available staff where they need to be so that we can intervene in those crises. And one of the most important features of the opioid crisis, and he didn't even mention this, but Judge McLean will actually be meeting with these participants virtually every day from the bench on a judicial check-in. And that is a national model that came out about three years ago from the state of New York. We'll be taking that model and changing it and improving it, I believe, in a unique way. But I'm excited that we get a chance
She can't get out where she was.
To impact Douglas County and our citizens in a positive way because we see this problem coming. It is a rising tide that we're trying to deal with, and we need your help. And I believe that that is the end of that presentation, so I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Pruitt. Any questions for Director Pruitt or Judge McLean? I do have a one, a comment to say that, congratulations. This is definitely exciting to hear that Douglas County would be the first opioid program in the state of Georgia. That's huge. That's large. And it's largely because of all the hard work you, Judge McLean, and Tim Pruitt have done to make this possible. So, I'm most, just definitely grateful. And I'm quite sure the Board of Commissioners as well. This is something we've been talking about quite a while, this opioid crisis in the United States. And I agree with you, Judge. It's not going away. It's just getting worse. So, it's time to bust a tablet head-on, so congratulations. Uh, I think you wanna say something, Vice Chair? See your head moving, are you? Did you wanna say something? Okay. Vice Chairman Robinson, yes.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, opiate is something that is important. I mean, you know, when I came out of high school in 1984, from '85 to 2015, that thirty-year policy, uh, we know there was a lot of incarcerations and things dealing with marijuana. And that policy ran its course, and now we're in a different era where opiates is now popping. We sort of almost normalized marijuana, though it still has a federal implications. It's, it, 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 we've normalized it, right? Almost like alcohol, we're ready for it to go legal. Now, this opiate has a different animal. This is a beast. And it's impacting parts of our community. Um, and you guys know, I get it. And, okay, so this crisis is hitting in light of the pandemic, and it's coping mechanism, right? It, 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 and it lets me know that, okay, look at Douglas County. Like, look at the tale of two worlds, like, okay, so it's on the edge of sort of the metro, but yet why is there, why is there such drug use? Now, don't get me wrong, ladies and gentlemen, that's the judicial side, their intervention. They are, the person already in cop case. And so, through the judge's spirit and his heart, I get it. All right, we're on the legislative side. Our job is just to create the atmosphere to try to prevent this. These are two different worlds. We hope they would never, never get there, to be before our Superior Court judges, for that matter. So, I do get it. Right, and I appreciate that. Uh, when I know Judge McLean, since 2015, when we began this conversation regarding mental and drug and DUI and all of those courts, that alternative sentencing options, that, like, no, he's that guy. But, but I look at it just like, okay, but who is it? Who's gonna benefit from this? And how do we stay this off? And we, as Board of Commissioners, what else can we do to prevent this? To ensure that there's equality and equitable distribution of opportunities and the pursuit of happiness? As opposed to just, it just seems like, ah, why is Douglas County, to your point, per capita? I mean, Tim Pruitt, thank you, Director, because I'm like, ooh, really? Top five per capita? Look at that. Top five in voting for the past three presidential cycles and top five in opiate use. How about that? And I, I, I'm like, okay, but what's really going on, Douglas? It appears to be a tale of two worlds. There's some concerns. So, as I sit here, and again, I commend you guys that you're seeking that money, and you're leveraging them dollars, and you've always been that way. You guys are very diligent and efficient with your do. So, I appreciate that. But it, again, as Judge McLean and I know, we're over here, they're over there. So, I, as I reconcile the approval and the casting of my vote for this, I'm also like, okay, but what does this mean for me and the greater, you know, the greater good? What does this mean for, okay, now how do I prevent this? How do I now leverage what he's got, his half-meine dollars? How do I now come and save all people from being able to do that? Yeah, we have those forms. We're doing things, but how do I prevent it versus intervention? And so, um, again, I, I mean, job well done, but it's just, again, one more time, are we awake to what y'all just said? Does the public know what you just said? And I'm just trying to drop home that point, like, again, my hat's off to the work you guys doing and your staff and your part-time staff, and y'all are leveraging, and you have a yield on our investment of tax dollars. I get all that, but this speaks to the bigger picture, like, oh, well, we are hurting. I mean, there was some serious drugs, to your point. Those drugs are serious. So, that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and yield the floor. I just had to share my heart as well. Continue on, gentlemen, in court, Judge McLean, and tell you guys doing a great job. But it makes me think on my side, okay, as we go into a new year, a new era, how do we now help stay off this versus just treating it after the fact? How do we now redistribute at a local level? I yield the floor, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. Commissioner Carleton?
Yes. Mr. Pruitt and Judge McLean, thank you for doing this. This is obviously, we'll need it. Uh, one of my questions to you is that I heard, Mr. Pruitt, you stating that you would award a contract to be able to provide the, um, the naltrexone and, um, naltrexone and the vabital? Was the other drug that you were speaking?
Can I get everyone to mute the mic, please?
Okay.
Because you're getting a little feedback. I'm just trying to help you. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh, that's much better. A little better, okay. So, uh, one of, one of the things that I want to, um, to put out is the use of CSB. Mr. Ray Leifert over at CSB told me that they will have, um, a end pharmacy clinic, um, starting on January 1st. He would love to be a part of this because he already has staff. That way, you don't have to necessarily use the funds to provide your own staff so we can continue the ecosystem. If we can keep this money within Douglas County and make sure these contracts, um, are utilized for our CSB and, um, other pharmacies within the county, then, of course, it's a win-win for all of Douglas County. We wish none of our citizens would have to, uh, resort to, um, abusing opioids. Uh, but it is a slippery slope, and there have been many that, uh, we know who are high-profiled, who have gotten caught in opioid addiction. Um, so, um, no shame in the game. You just wanna make sure that as we provide the treatment, as they come in contact with you all, that we're keeping most of everything that we do here in Douglas County. Um, also, would this mean that the Board of Commissioners will have to get out of our suite because you're gonna need another court and more room? What does this mean, Judge McLean?
It means I'll just have to work harder.
You're gonna have to work harder? I know, I know, uh, we talked about it, uh, a few weeks ago, that there, uh, there may have to be night court and other things. I mean, y'all are just innovating, and kudos to you. Uh, it speaks of how you are progressing and moving Douglas County forward and making sure that you're serving the citizens of the county. But to my Board of Commissioners, we gotta see what's going on. We gotta start making some moves to progress so that our judges and the court system has what they need in order to keep it moving forward. So, again, thank you, Judge McLean, and thank you, Mr. Pruitt, for all you're doing. Madam Chair, I yield. You're muted? You're muted?
Thank you. I talked about two minutes without knowing. Thank you all so much. Uh, we're gonna move to our business items, uh, tab number.
Madam Chair, real quick? Yeah, thank you. To, 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 thank you, real quick. So, to Madam Carleton's point and Judge McLean, we had this conversation, um, a few years ago when we started the mental health work. And, and it was, the challenge is, okay, but at some point, you're gonna have to sustain this. At some point, you're gonna need housing. Uh, at some point, you're gonna need it. And we had this similar conversation, well, we're gonna innovate it, not give it. But, okay, if one can put, then two can. And I'm looking at this like, okay, but as I go into a budget cycle, as we go into strategic planning, as we go into, it's like, okay, Judge, you know how we get. We're trying to anticipate your need. Madam Carleton was like, okay, we got a probate judge that now needs a court and staff. We now have you guys, like, no, you don't, don't overestimate revenue and underestimate the cost. That's inverted. And so, we're just planting the seed. You guys are good, but I'm just to that point. I need my director, uh, of all the directors, maybe associate with finance and so, but yeah. I didn't pay attention to this. We have to anticipate. Now, again, they do their job. They're service delivery. We get it. But we should come alongside of them and hear their hearts and, okay, guys, let's create a model that at least we can now begin to anticipate the future and the impact on this growth. It says, okay, but you're gonna still need something, you know, we're gonna still continue to need. All right, so how do we, how do we sustain this? And yes, you are gonna continue to innovate, but there's still a cost. And while I know you're gonna leverage grants and all that, but yeah, there's still a cost. There's still this part-time or that person or that person. At some point, there's a scale that only so much you can carry in a single day. And while I appreciate the humbleness and the humility, and it is not a fake humility, we're like, no, we got you, and we hear you. And so, we'll have to do the heavy lifting to get our minds around that number that says, okay, y'all trying to sustain this and institutionalize this innovation? And we lay that down as part of our planning process and get ahead of it. Not obligate ourselves to it yet, but it's just we anticipate. So, I just wanna make that mark, and y'all know it. By doing this, this is setting us down a path. So, I yield, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carleton and Commissioner Robinson.
Uh, Chairman Jones.
Oh, okay, your hand is up again. I'm sorry. Commissioner Carleton?
Yes, one question that I totally forgot to ask. Does this revolve, um, does this involve a match from the county?
Uh, no, ma'am. We're gonna, we can use existing grant funds as the match, so there's not an actual additional expenditure by the Board of Commissioners. But I wanna quickly just plant a seed and comment on the Vice Chair's comments. One thing we're looking at very closely, Vice Chair, is Sanctuary Village is gonna have a part to play in this. Because one of the biggest problems we have with people coming hot out of the jail who are heroin addicts is keep them alive long enough for treatment to take effect. And unfortunately, the existing supervised housing that we have in the county through Dr. Ford, the capacity is exceeded. So, we have a lot of people sitting in jail because of no housing. And sometimes people don't get into drug court because there's simply no housing option for them. A lot of them choose to wait. Uh, some of them decide to just go ahead and resolve their case. And so, what we're looking at is a mixture of straight-up homeless people at Sanctuary Village and some opiate people because then we can take someone straight out of jail into a housing option that has a level of supervision. We're looking at having the office of this case manager at Sanctuary Village. We're looking at having additional support for the village. We're gonna leverage this opiate money to provide additional support for the other residents of Sanctuary Village because we don't have any office space for the people we're talking about. It just doesn't exist. So, those are some things we're looking at, and of course, that's a different conversation. But once I get to the point of launching Sanctuary Village, I'm gonna obviously have a detailed conversation. But once I get to the point of launching Sanctuary Village, I'm gonna obviously have a detailed conversation with you guys about what it's gonna look like and how it's gonna be staffed, that sort of thing. But that's part of what I'm looking at here, and I think that directly addresses uh, the Vice Chair's comment that I wanted to address.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Robinson, thank you, Commissioner Carthen, and thank you Judge McLean. Tim Pruitt, Director, I have number eleven is for you as well. It's the first business item of the day, it is authorization to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Douglas uh, Circuit Accountability Courts and Anthony J. Nicolosa, and authorize the chairman to uh, sign our related documents. Director Pruitt.
So for my final item, this is uh, housekeeping, Mr. Nicolosi, very good, you were very close.
I was close.
You're close, you're close, he's a, yes, uh, he is a vital member of our working staff, he is a contractor, uh, but has been with us for a number of years, started out part-time and now takes on a majority of hours with us. Um, he has had a lot of training, this is a continuation of a previous M O U, I have to bring this back before the board uh, every year or so, so that we can update it, uh, there's no increase in pay, there's no increase in hours. It is simply a refreshing of the current understanding that we have with Mr. Nicolosi, so he can keep providing us service.
Any questions from the from the board? Okay, thank you so much, Director Pruitt.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to tab number twelve, Board of Commissioners' authorization to approve agreement amendment by Civic Plus to convert billing for their online registration software and service from a monthly percentage-based billing cycle to an annualized flat fee in the amount of five thousand ninety-three dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Dukes, Gary Dukes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, yes ma'am, this is the uh, annual con- contract with a company that provides our software for our online registration of all of our classes that we provide throughout the county and also the reservations that uh, our citizens can do online for our parks, uh, amenities such as ball fields, uh, picnic areas and so forth. And it has been uh, reviewed by legal.
Okay, any questions for Director Dukes, or? Pretty self-explanatory, thank you so much, Director Dukes. We're gonna move on to tab number thirteen, authorization to approve part-time contracts with Jesse Lemon, Brian Byers, Rufus Huntley and Dean Ricketts as Deputy Coroner's, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Uh, Coroner Godlin, are you on the line? Coroner Godlin, I know I spoke with you earlier this morning. Well, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna move on, Lisa, do you buy any chance? Yes.
Yes ma'am, she called in, so I don't, I'm not sure if you're still on Renee, but you may need to unmute your phone if you are. Let me check and see if she's still on.
What I'll do, Lisa, just, I'm gonna move on to the next one and then while you're trying to get prepared for her, for the court.
Okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you. Um, Board of Commissioners, we're just gonna put a pin in number thirteen and we'll just pivot back. Fourteen, authorization to approve Dominion Voting Systems Form of Services Order for fifty poll pads in the amount of sixty-three thousand six hundred dollars grant-funded, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Kidd.
Yes ma'am, uh, Dominion Voting Solutions is state vendor that currently has the state election system. This uh, item agenda is to expand the number of poll pads, which are the voting units that we look up voters at polling locations with to uh, essentially purchase fifty more utilizing funds of from the Center for Center, Center for Tech and Civic Life grant that uh, the county received.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we're gonna move on to your next item, which is authorization to purchase a mobile bus, voting bus in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, and this is grant-funded as well, am I correct?
Yes ma'am, uh, let me see, can I take over the screen?
Sure.
Okay, I was trying to get a little brief, but you all have uh, tried to do a short uh, PowerPoint. But I don't see devices. Okay, uh, TJ's on the line, how do I share my screen?
Okay, when you, when you hover over, um, you should see a camera icon, a microphone icon, and then the next icon is like a rectangle with a, with an arrow. If you press it, then you'll have the option of clicking on one of your screens to share.
Okay.
You see it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, uh, it took mine away, I don't know if you all can see my screen now?
We can.
Okay, this is uh, essentially uh, the same bus style, this is the same company that Fulton County worked with uh, in order to do this. Uh, this is the exterior of the Fulton County Mobile Voting Unit. This is essentially the inside of the mobile voting unit without uh, the computer equipment inside of it. Some of what we feel are the features of of the voting unit. This is, one second, a breakdown of the cost of the voting unit. Now, all of these funds are part of the previously stated grant approval that the county has already procured, so there is no budgetary impact to the county at this time. The reason why we had to bring it before full commission is this is essentially purchasing a vehicle that down the line may have maintenance costs like tires, oil changes or things like that that can be discussed as part of future budgetary items, but the initial cost and purchase of the unit is fully covered.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Okay, let's see how I get back. Okay.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions with this point regarding? Oh, okay, I see you, I I hear you, Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell?
So, Mr. Kidd, just a couple of questions, so you did mention, I guess, the maintenance side of this. Have you started at least preparing for that? I mean, like you write, there's gonna be a common denominator, tires and oil change and gas and blah blah blah, so that way, that would have a budget impact to your budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
Like gas or driver, cause this looks like this may be a unique driver, or is it, are you planning on driving everybody around and proper driving?
No, uh, I can't drive, so.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, so go ahead.
Uh, I, yeah, we we have uh, started thinking about the these impacts of this unit. Realistically speaking, as far as purchasing and implementation, we're not looking at this year as far as being able to utilize this. So at the early years uh, timeframe, this would not come uh, into actual, we would have it uh, for the municipal election going uh, into next year, but realistically speaking, this probably won't come online until we begin the gubernatorial races.
Yes, and and.
So we still have a little time, even as far as planning the implementation.
Right, and and that's what I want you to make sure you start kinda looking at, and looking at those potential costs. Because we're dealing with the munich- municipal uh, elections uh, all year. How do you plan to incur that cost, or is that just gonna be a cost of the county?
The, well, it will, uh, with the municipals, we have set an agreement with the municipalities. If they choose to utilize these features, then those costs are passed on to the municipality. They don't have to utilize this feature, I plan on using it with the county's perspective, but we're going to have those conversations and work out those those agreements with the municipalities as well, if they so choose to.
So you haven't put together a plan as to what those numbers are, or are you planning on putting together a plan?
I plan on putting together a plan uh, for the municipalities, I have to get past this election.
Oh, I understand, I understand. And 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 I'm 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 talking down the road, I'm not talking about, I'm not looking for a number today, no, I'm not, I'm just only making sure.
Yes, sir, I plan on having those conversations with the municipalities as well.
Those conversations meaning what you put together, not?
Yes.
Okay, I I think you gotta determine what that is versus them telling you saying, you know.
No, 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 it would be putting uh, putting together a plan of this is what this would cost if you choose to utilize these features, that I require to utilize those features.
Gotcha, 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 now, the other question though, so with the equipment that will go inside, would that be some special type of equipment? Would you be able to go in there and vote, or would you be able to just go in there and just sit around and just?
No, you, this essentially is a drivable polling location. Uh, from from our perspective, this expands the capacity for advanced voting. This uh, right now, we've had conversations with several precincts due to the coronavirus that had some uh, issue with us coming inside of that precinct. This will allow us to have the leverage that if we did have to take out a precinct, we could still maintain the continuity of an elections process.
Got it, this this, well, would this be like you'll pull up in somebody's neighborhood and say, okay, well, you wanna vote coming out of Hunter Bridge? Come right down.
Yes, we we can, yes, sir, we plan on scheduling days and times that essentially the mobile voting unit will be at different uh, sections throughout the county on specific dates.
Got it, how many will it, is housed at any given time, is it no more than four, ten, fifty, what 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 would it house?
The setup of the inside of the unit is county uh, specific, so I'm thinking probably around ten to fifteen units.
So ten to fifteen units of people inside, it could it could it will give, but I'm assuming based on, go ahead.
Essentially, you would need about three poll workers inside the unit and you could bring people inside. The ten to fifteen are actual stations for which people would vote on. You you can't see the inside of this one because it's not laid out, but uh, if you think of a traditional voting uh, room, the machinery that you walk up to and vote, this will take uh, those um, that machinery.
But during this pandemic, you probably will have to pass that based on the social distancing and all that.
Yes, we would control the number of individuals that are allowed inside of the voting unit, yes.
Even though we're not doing it now, we're talking about a year from now that we, you know, I don't know when we'll be at that time, will we be still at this point? But, you know.
Yes, basically, at this point.
Right, right, okay, okay, alright, um, interesting, so uh, just a little bit more details, at least on my behalf, that I'm looking for to make sure I truly get, I mean, I'm I'm glad that we're actually spending the funds, we get this, and I think uh, and and will I lay out, will we wrap our bus van, whatever this is considered called, Douglas Countyans, or we're gonna wrap it, what I just saw?
That was, essentially the bus had Fulton County uh, on there because that was the last one that they did, I would say Douglas County Mobile Voting Unit.
Okay, so we're wrapping, dealing with Douglas County in our layout?
Yes.
Alright, uh, I'll yield at that point, but outside of that, the work, thank you, uh, you're back.
Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Carthen, I see your hand.
Thank you, Chairman Jones, uh, Director Kidd, good morning. Uh, my question for you is, have you looked at the um, cost for uh, insurance on this type of a unit? Have you had a chance to speak with our um, uh, safety uh, Director Matt Laverne?
Uh, we, I've had uh, some contacts, I still have to get the numbers all together for insurance.
Okay, uh, we definitely need that.
I can have that for you by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, that was gonna be my next question. My second question for you is, where will the, where will this be housed? Once you get it and and it's functioning, where will you house it within the county?
Now, within the county, the county, we would have to uh, come up with a a a space to where we're storing the unit. But essentially, it would essentially be stored like we do other large-scale uh, they, other large-scale uh, things like fire trucks and things like that. So if you all agree to this, then I would get uh, with probably uh, fleet services to see where we uh, have the space and capacity to store, it's it's a basically a R V.
An R V, okay, cause I would assume that with it being a mobile voting unit, there may be some sensitive things on there that we would definitely wanna keep under lock and key and secure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would this unit also, Director Kidd, be used for um, registration, voter registration?
We have the capacity to use it as far as voter registration, pull it up to affairs and community outreach as far as that aspect as well. I do intend to utilize it for those purposes as well.
Okay, and would you also be using this R V for training? Uh, like for uh, poll um, workers or or that type of uh, I'm just trying to see how many uses could you get out of this? I think it's a great idea, but I just don't wanna just.
Yeah, we can utilize it for training as well because it will have a full complement of elections uh, equipment.
Okay, alright, um, good deal, and these funds, I believe you told us, have to be used by the end of the year and this helps you to do that in compliance with the grant funds that you've been given?
Yes, ma'am, this uh, essentially, there are certain uh, items on uh, the grant funding was want to look at expanding your opportunities to vote to different members of of your community. This will essentially allow us to expand uh, election date and uh, an advanced voting site as well.
Okay. And will and will this unit also be A D A compliant?
Yes, it will be A D A compliant.
Okay, alright, thank you so much, Director Kidd, I yield the floor, Madam Chair.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Carthen. Uh, Attorney Bernard, I believe you wanted to weigh in and you had some, you could respond to the insurance-related question, uh, Attorney Bernard?
Yes ma'am, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, so this vehicle will be, will be titled in the county, and so therefore, and it'll be assigned to the Board of Elections, no different than any other motor vehicle in the pool. It'll be assigned to the vote uh, Board of Elections and Registration, so it will go on the county's insurance. So it's not a matter of privately pricing the insurance on this, it's a matter of Matt im- adding it to the inventory. The only other thing I would suggest that Milton do get with Matt on is depending upon size of the vehicle, it may require a C D L in order to operate uh, this compliant with our safety protocols for purposes of our discount. And lastly, uh, I think Commissioner Carthen mentioned security. Uh, Milton, if the contents inside this motor vehicle uh, are expensive, like computers and whatnot, Matt needs to know that to make sure that when it's assigned on our insurance, the co- the cost of the contents is covered in the policy. But I I don't think it's a, it's a matter of going out and buying separate insurance, it's just a matter of adding it to our fleet. I do think that Commissioner Carthen's point about securing it is a big deal and there's gotta be set aside in the motor vehicle pool for this to be secured somewhere, I would recommend. So anyway, I hope that answers or follows up on Milton's responses.
Thank you so much, uh, Attorney Bernard. Alright, if there are no other questions regarding this, you have one more, and then I understand that the coroner has joined us, but I just wanna finish ta- uh, tab number sixteen with you, Director Kidd, and then will be uh, your items will be complete for for now. Uh, tab number sixteen, which is authorization to purchase a ballot extractor with signature verification software in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars, can you explain this to the board?
Okay, are you able to see my screen at this time?
We see it, mhm.
Okay. Okay, this is essentially the ballot extractor, the ballot extractor is a device that uh, cuts open absentee ballots that remove the content of the absentee ballots. Right now, uh, what we're doing, we're individually having, well, we have poll workers that are individually cutting uh, absentee ballots and removing the content to be able to scan absentee ballots, so this is basically mechanizing that process. The ballot uh, extractor uh, funds, this is another uh, grant-funded item in its entirety uh, for, for uh, from the same uh, grant that we uh, brought before this board before. This is the total cost that's on the screen of uh, the ballot extractor. The ballot extractor does have basically some additional features that can be uh, purchased. The total cost of uh, the ballot extractor would be covered this year if the county so chooses to enter into a. if the county so chooses to enter into a maintenance, uh, agreement for future years with, uh, the company, this is essentially a company that's used by other counties as well for their ballot extractor, uh, devices. These on, on screen are any additional maintenance contract that the county would choose to, uh, cover, uh, this device. You do not have to, uh, have the maintenance contract. Those are just additional items.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Vice Chair.
Uh-huh. Vice Chairman Robinson.
Thank you. Uh, Director Kidd, all right, so we got a ballot extractor. I wonder who came up with that, with the invention and got that contract and, uh, good for them in, in, in today's times. So let's, 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 how, how many ballots are, what is the, what is the production or output of this? In other words, how many ballots will it read?
Well, it's, it's not, uh, reading, uh, ballots at all. Uh, the ballot extraction, the ballot extraction rate is two thousand per hour.
All right, two thousand dollars, that's what I was looking for, two thousand an hour. So ten thousand a day. Right, so, all right, so how many, how many ballots have we received, drop box, whatever, just estimate? This is just all academic and theory. I'm not trying to box, uh, anything.
Uh, for this, for this current election, we've, uh, received back in eighteen thousand, twenty-one ballots.
Eighteen thousand, so twenty thousand, just for easy math, divided by two thousand is what? Ten? Doesn't that right?
You did.
Take you ten hours with this machine to, to open these ballots, all right? Got it. Takes me, so, so based on, uh, the voting population of Douglas County, our citizens who may be paying attention to this, who may see this later, it'll take you ten hours to go through the current, current pan, no problem. All right, now walk me through extenders, that's just to open the ballots. Now talk me through the production, which is how long does it take now to scan the ballots? How does it, give me an idea.
Okay, right now, right now, that opening of ballots is done by individuals that are individually opening, uh, these ballots. The state, uh, because of the large number of, uh, ballots that counties have received, has extended, uh, the ruling for these past two elections to allow us to begin to open absentee ballots. Right now, with straight manpower, what, uh, what would take us two, two to three weeks to do can be done in ten hours.
Right. And that's just to open, but then what happens once I open it? Where does that?
Once, once that ballot is opened, then it goes to a separate scanning team. That, uh, those scanning teams, well, the openers put them back into batches of fifty. Then they're scanned, uh, into a scanning system. That piece will still remain the same. This is essentially using, uh, this machine to eliminate the hand process of opening and extracting the ballots.
I've got you, all right. So we, we opened it, no problems, it's all good. So we got it, we got, we got it, we got a, a device that can open, great. And, and, uh, for those who out there have a process flow mindset, I'm, I'm just process flow, all right? So the, the, you know, the circles and the squares and the trapezoids, those people who know how to do process flows. So I'm just thinking through this. So, all right, so we opened it. My next step is, is got to read it. So I've got ten thousand, I can do all, everything, uh, uh, this, this is good academic. Twenty thousand, ten hours to finish it, open it. The next step is I've got to scan it. So I got to take those twenty thousand roughly and scan them. How many, uh, how, what's, what's the productivity per hour for those right there? In other words, I'm now moving to stage two.
The scanner can take anywhere from fifty to, uh, a hundred dollars a minute.
Oh, a minute? So fifty, a minute, times sixty minutes, that's what, three hundred or three thousand? I don't know. I, I, I'm, I'm, me, my second cup of coffee, but you said fifty per minute and the sixty minutes in an hour, right?
Mhm.
Uh, that's sixty times fifty, what, that's three thousand, right? Did I get that right?
Yeah, you did.
All right, so I got three thousand an hour. There's eighteen, that's six hours. All right, I got it, so just roughly. So I got to take me ten hours to do this current batch, plus or minus twenty thousand. It takes me another six hours to, to process through, um, this, um, 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 you know, put scanning, I'll put them in, click. Uh, got it. So once I've done that, is there anything else that the team has to touch or do to calculate the ballot, or is it all now technology? Those two steps, opening, scanning, talk to us.
It's o- opening, scanning, then, uh, you bring the parties involved with, because any ballots that the machine has, uh, indicated that were improperly filled out, then the human component is back into the situation. We have, uh, what's called a vote review panel. The vote review panel consists of both political parties that review, uh, the ballots that have been scanned in. And any one, uh, people, it tells you to bubble in. So people that make check marks or make any, uh, discrepancies on the ballot, then, uh, then the human team that consists of both political parties have to review those ballots.
Right, so I, quality control, that's your quality control, and obviously you manage by exception anomaly, I, I got it, all right. So the thing is to kick out, you got to go over there and look at, okay, how many eggs are spoiled, how many crack, how, okay, I got it, all right. So you, I get it. So third step is I now have to go through this process. So out of every ballot, what is, what is, I'm sure you appreciate this, how, how many are, 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 don't make that threshold, in other words, they, they get kicked out? So what percentage, I mean, you think about six, six?
For every, for every thousand ballots, probably about three hundred are voters that, uh, either have what's called an overvote or undervote. Overvote is they fill in too many things, you have a stray mark on there. You have, uh, done check marks instead of, uh, bubbling in. So I would say for every thousand hand marked ballots, three hundred have to be reviewed.
Wow, thirty percent? Woo, I get it. It, it, it is a manual, I, I, I understand versus to touch, this, this, I get it, it's like, wow.
But the only thing about thirty is though, now with current technology, even that review is a little faster because in previous years, those thirty percent would have to be hand duplicated. But utilizing the technology now allows us, uh, to scan that ballot in and to be able to adjudicate on the screen.
All right, so thirty percent, all right, we, we scanned it, all right, on the screen. All right, I'm gonna give it another hour or two to go, just another hour, it's thirty percent of ten hour, I mean, three hour, another hour. So I'm up to fourteen hours to now get through this whole process. Ten hours to open it, uh, three hours to, um, in stage two to deal with sort of the scanning in or reading it. And the last one is your quality control, which is about another hour, so ten plus.
It's gonna be more than a, another hour because the quality control piece, all right. In, in your timing phase, the opening is the longest amount of time.
Yep.
The second longest amount of time is actually coming to an agreement with what you're calling quality control is our vote review panel. The panel, uh, consists of both political parties and they both have to, uh, agree on what their decision is of this ballot. So that sometimes takes, uh, a little longer than, well, it's gonna take longer than an hour. That's, uh, the second longest piece because some people may, uh, see, you see this check mark as, uh, indication of the voter's intention, whereas this voter say, no, it was over too far, so that takes.
All right, well, I mean, that's fine. So I give it, do I get a one to one that it's, we just double the second stage to three hours? I'm just looking for order of.
Uh, I would, I would take the second stage to at least three to four hours, yes.
All right, all right, so we're gonna add, so ten plus three plus three. All right, so give or take, so to get through all three phases, ten, three, that's, that's sixteen. We, it's okay, just sixteen hours for my fear. It's gonna take me sixteen hours to finish the current. Those that were dropped off some kind of way or mailed, right? These are dropped off ballots and as well as mailing ballots, is that accurate or no?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, all ballots, all, all, all right. All right, so it's gonna take that long and we think, and again, um, and, and my last question is that can I still turn in ballots, um, tomorrow? Or am I done turning in ballots? If I decide not to get in line to vote, uh, am I allowed to go to a drop in box or anything like that? Can you explain the process, please?
You have until seven PM now on election day to have returned your ballot. If you have not returned your ballot at this point, please do not use the postal service. Drop them in one of our ten drop box locations. Those ten drop box locations, I will have individuals at each of those locations at seven PM on election day to close that box and collect any, uh, absentee ballots that are in that box. Those ballots will then be transferred back to our tabulation center to be opened and started to process.
All right, all right, so, all right, so, so recognizing, you know, first day versus the last day, we know there's probably going to be volume, uh, people will decide to like get out of line perhaps. I thought, okay, this, I, I thought I was gonna be in here, but I, I just can't go. Whatever it may be, I would, have we anticipate the need to be able to check that box at, uh, at least midpoint, or are we just gonna let, we're gonna just stuff the, the box?
No.
I, I don't know, I mean, are, are you gonna at least have somebody?
Yes, we will, uh, essentially go midday and collect the absentee ballot boxes. We will then again, uh, send out the team to close out the absentee ballot boxes at seven PM.
All right, that's good enough, Madam Chair. I, I've got what I needed out of this conversation. Thank you, ma'am. I yield a full.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Guyer, Commissioner Guyer, I believe you.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Director Kidd, um, now there's two envelopes. There's the inside envelope that goes in the outside envelope. So who takes it out of that second envelope?
Uh, the same, uh, team that, uh, cutting the ballots currently takes it, uh, out of the second envelope as well. But with the extractor, the extractor is able to shake the ballot and cut through both the inner and the outer envelope and extract the ballot itself.
Uh, if it's placed in there correctly, I guess, um, uh, in the tax office, we had a letter opener for all of our mail that we process every year. And oftentimes there were jams because the blade does get dull after it cuts paper for so long and everything. But, um, what happens if it jams, uh? Are you still matching the outside envelope with the ballot?
No, the.
You're counting, you're counting the outside envelope.
When, uh, okay, this is how absentee ballotting works. When it first comes into our office, we have, uh, checked the signature of that ballot and we've essentially given the voter credit. So by the time it goes to our opener team, they're physically just opening, uh, the ballots. They don't necessarily have to maintain, uh, them with the, uh, the outer envelope has the voter's name. We want it to be go into a, a stack and be mixed up where you can't say that this inner came out of this hour.
Okay, you say you're checking the signature. What, what are you checking the signature against?
When you register to vote, you're required to provide a written signature. When you do your driver's license, we have access to your driver's service's signature. If you have ever, uh, voted before, whether in person or any time you vote or sign any piece of paper with our office, we maintain a digital, uh, version of your signatures throughout the years. And we're required to by law to check.
So as these are being opened, you're verifying that signature against, uh, two or three files?
No, before they go for opener, the first step when they come into our office is to verify a signature and basically say this is a valid ballot.
So you have to call each ballot, uh?
Yes.
To, to look at the signature?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so this, um, authorization also calls with signature verification. So what is, could you tell us about the signature verification software?
Uh, okay, that was the erroneous part of this. Eventually, uh, we will come to you all to, uh, do a signature verification piece to this. That's a component for a different day that essentially, uh, the outer envelope will be fed through another computer and that is able to do what we are manually doing right now. But that's not gonna be included right now with this piece.
But as they're being opened, are they being counted, the envelopes? Are they being counted? Because you told us at one time, you count the envelopes against the ballots to make sure.
We do. When we open, when we open the, uh, outer, when we open the envelopes themselves, before they go to a cutter, whether that's a human cutter or a machine cutter, they've been placed in batches. You have to assign a batch number to each batch. So the state requires us to make our batches anywhere from fifty to a hundred. So essentially, you will put this fifty or to a hundred in this batch to open. Then you put that batch back together. By that, I mean, you would collect all of the outer and inner envelopes, put your batch slip back on those. Those fifty ballots will be, uh, ta- taken out. Those fifty ballots can be run through your scanner at that point. But the batch slip, uh, for that batch would essentially stay with those outer envelopes.
Okay. If I go in to vote, I actually put my ballot through a scanner, so you don't have to scan those?
You put your ballots through a scanner, but, uh, those ones that are, uh, put through the scanner, we do have to scan those. Part of our elections process, at the, uh, after the election, we do what's called a post-election audit. The post-election audit is, the state tells us these batches, whether it's in-person batch or that in-person is you came in to vote, because there's a paper, uh, version of every ballot that's cast now. Those ballots are put into batches as well. So it tells us to go to batch seventy-six and pull ballots, uh, thirteen through eight from this batch. That can be an in-person batch, that can be a mailed batch, uh, uh, provisionals, if you had any provisionals, all your applications are batched.
Okay, um, the Secretary of State mailed my husband a absentee ballot for this election, even though he did not request, he requested one during the primary. Okay, we still have that ballot, uh, what do we do with it?
Okay.
So he, he didn't vote in person since then.
One sec. He did request that ballot. We can't disseminate any ballots without your request. He may not have understood that he was requesting. I can pull his application and, and, uh, show you this as well. On the application for absentee ballots, you have to, you have two protective classes, elderly and disabled. Right next to those on the initial application, it says, if you meet one of these two categories and check this box, you will receive the ballots for this election season. So in June ninth, uh, your husband checks one of those two protective classes and knocks that out.
He had, he had surgery, that's why he could not go in.
Yes, so that, that put him on to a, essentially a rollover list for this election season. If you no longer choose to, uh, use that absentee ballot, in this case, he's already voted. He can write spoiled, like spoiled milk on the both sides of the outer envelope and write the word voted in person and drop that ballot back into our drop box. Essentially, when he came in to vote in person, we had him fill out an affidavit swearing and testing that he was not going to use that ballot and we've essentially, uh, taken that ballot out of our system. But the physical ballot itself, you're required to by law to return that physical ballot to our office. They can write spoiled on both sides of the outer envelope, voted in person on that and slide that ballot into one of our drop boxes or bring it into the office.
Any of the drop boxes?
Any of the drop boxes. We have ten drop box locations throughout the county. Those can be accessed on our website, it's celebratedouglascounty.com. Under the elections tab, you'll see drop box and that'll show you with pictures where all of our drop boxes are.
All right, thank you. Uh, you're back.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner, um, Guyer, thank you. All right, if there are no other questions for Milton, we're gonna move on. The coroner has arrived. Uh, Board of Commissioners, we, we, we will pivot back to, uh, tab number thirteen and I will read it. Authorization to approve part-time contracts with Jesse Fleming, Brian Byers, Rufus Hundley and Dean Ricketts as deputy coroners and authorized the chairman to sign all related documents. Uh, Coroner Godwin, I believe you're on the line, you're on the line.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, the, um, the replacement is for, uh, um, Jesse Flemmons will be replacing Chantel Fleming and the other three deputy coroners. They are only backup for when we need them, when we're out and we need assistance or if one of the other deputy coroners want to take a vacation or they get sick or get hurt on the job. Whatever the case may be, they are just for backup purposes only.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Guyer?
Yes, ma'am, um, I thank you for that. You know, uh, anytime someone comes before this board, uh, they oftentimes they bring us data or numbers or figures or whatever. or numbers or figures or whatever. And unfortunately, a lot of, uh, uh, Coroner Godwin's figures have been incorrect. Um, I can, I have it documented and I'm gonna run through it very quickly. Um, when she, at the beginning of the year, in February fourteen, two thousand seventeen, she wrote us a letter, uh, to show how, uh, the county had grown. And so, uh, she was, uh, comparing, uh, her figures to the figures of the previous administration. At that time, she said the previous administration did two hundred and forty-nine. Well, uh, later on in that same year, in December of that year, when she was asking for a budget increase, she said they had only pro- processed a hundred and twenty-four in two thousand sixteen to her two thousand sixty-one. Quite the difference in, in the figures. The probate records, um, will, uh, document everything I am saying. On, um, and by the way, her two thousand eighteen budget was based on her two thousand seventeen, uh, overrun budget. On March the seventh in two thousand seventeen, uh, Godwin, uh, Coroner Godwin came before the board and asked for eighty-one percent increase in her pay and salary for her deputies. She stated her department had already processed in two months seventy-three cases. Probate office says, no, they did thirty-four. But everything, every extension of, uh, trying to figure out what we should pay her and everything was figured on that seventy-three number, which was twice what she actually did. Um, she, um, has since then been before the board and asked for additional deputies and funds because the workload while.
Commissioner Guyer, you're frozen. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes, here. Okay, Commissioner Guyer's frozen for now.
Yes, you can, you can hear me.
Okay, um.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, I believe, uh, hold on one second.
Yeah, we gotta wait for her to come back, but.
No, that's what I was gonna do, I was just gonna ask TJ to see if he could work with her to see if he could help her come back and then I was gonna come on to you. TJ, if you could work with Commissioner Guyer to see if you could help her restore her system and then I'm gonna move on to Vice Chair. Robinson, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Have, have you, you would do the floor out of respect on this body?
Well, I'm trying to.
I'm not trying to pivot past, now I gotta ask the floor, but she's wrong.
She's not back, so let me just give her a moment.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you don't mind.
Mm-mm, not wrong.
Hmm, Lisa, if you could, clerk, if you could just give Commissioner Guyer the call-in number, she should have it, but just, so she could call in.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Just bear with us for a minute, uh, Board of Commissioners and citizens experiencing just a little, a minor, uh, technical difficulty.
So, so when are we coming back in person while we're waiting, Madam Chair? Are we coming back anytime soon?
Yeah, not at this time, uh, December ninth, uh, the, the governor has extended the orders and certainly we wanna make sure we're inclusive for all our citizens, so right now we're still virtual, I know, I understand. Virtual technology is challenging sometimes, but, um, in order to continue to protect us and, uh, respect this virus, this is the best we have. But she'll, she should be calling in in a second, we have access to two methods, is she, is she on the line?
I just spoke to her and she's going to call in, so she should be on shortly.
Okay. Okay.
I'm, I'm, Madam Chair, the floor is still hers, is all right?
Yes, Lisa, going forward, what we can do with our commissioners, just make sure they have, uh, we email them the telephone number. I know they see it, but so she could have access if we, if we alter our systems.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, oh, thank you. Okay, she's here.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now, Commissioner, yes. Commissioner Guyer, you have the floor again.
That's the second time that I've done that this morning. But anyway, um, I will continue, um, but you see that she gives us one figure one time and then she gives us entirely different figures the next time. She sent them before the Board of Commissioners for additional deputies, although she's just doing probably one percent, if that, of the work. But she drives a county car and runs on county fuel. She actually admitted on T V to Randy Travis that she abused her county car. Um, and the financial report ending December thirty-first of two thousand seventeen, we had to give her an additional eighty thousand dollars to balance her two thousand seventeen budget. But then before the books were closed, they had to give her another twelve thousand. She came before this board a month ago asking for four deputies to be added, when in fact she has been working them, uh, since March of this year. This is against the law, they have not been sworn in, they have not been bonded. The, there are open invoices from these people totaling nine thousand dollars, over nine thousand dollars. She told us a month ago, her department has processed three hundred and twenty-five cases, where the probate office says, no, they haven't, she, he's only thirty-two hundred and ten cases for them, a difference of a hundred and fifteen. What is going on here? I do not, I think there's two views, Chairman Jones, to show that it was, it was inaccurate. Also, Mike Axon, her chief deputy, has already made not, over ninety-three thousand dollars this year. As I said, for them to be working without being sworn in, without being bonded, they are putting this county in a very dangerous position. And when we approve anything that is contrary to the laws of the state of Georgia, then we are compromising this whole board. We need to hold her accountable. This is, uh, abuse and when we approve her abuse, we are abusing the whole system. Perhaps we could take, uh, put her back on a per investigation fee contract track, where she only gets paid if she works. Perhaps her vehicle, which she does not use for work, should be taken away from her after all she has two county coroners hands that she could use. Whatever we do, we, we got to stop rewarding her bad behavior by approving every whim she brings before us. We are becoming part of the offense and their abuse while disrupting the procedures set in place to properly govern this county. And I just ask y'all, if you look at the, um, invoices, uh, that have already approved for people that we didn't even have on these kind of roads, if you look at that, you will find several double billing, several double billing. This is not the way to operate that office as the grand jury has said in the past. We need to look at this carefully because, um, and she's already been working these people since March. She's really telling you, she's snapping her nose at, at the Board of Commissioners because she does, this is the second time she's done this too. She does not follow the rules. So, why would we reward her just by giving her everything she wants? We need to look into this further and with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, uh, Commissioner Guyer for being so eloquent, uh, with your, um, dissertation. I appreciate you. Um, Vice Chairman Robinson, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am, um. No, I, you know, you know, me and Madam Guyer land on this, on the same position that, 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 that's serious. It's like, ooh, um, I think change is necessary. I appreciate her opening the door to this about the standard, about expectations. Um, while this is a, a peer, that she's elected, I'm not gonna judge her in a place of like, oh, hold on now. Let's, let's use that, that lens where it should be used, but I get it, but I appreciate that segue. Um, as relates to paying our bills, as relates to, you know, I'm, I'm listening to this, 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 like, but I wanna see, I mean, it, it, we're, we're marginalizing and, and trying to invalidate, like, do you know what this person does?
She doesn't do anything.
And it, it's such a judgment, it's such a double and high standard, it's like, aye, uh-huh, and I disagree. I don't have to do anything to that extent. Do you know what this person does? And you know the atmosphere that has been created to allow her to do her job to engage this administration that doesn't do anything but obstruct and create this, this facade, uh-huh. I disagree. I, I disagree with everything. I get it, hope her, don't judge her because I can use the same lens back against this entire administration. Every, I owe it down the line, uh-huh. And I'm like, okay, but I, where's the help? Where's the support? I mean, she's only trying to help deceased members and, and, and pick them up and, and put them in the right spot and do the paperwork. But it's such a polar, polarized, it's like, okay, really? I, I'd like to use that same, like, you know what, let's use that same judgment back. The same exacting. I mean, it, it's called the pleasure of the Lord, right? Uh-huh. And I, 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 I just, I get it. So I, I, there's my statement, but let's come back to what's being asked. These people are on demand and it's only a per case, per hundred seventy-five dollars, a hundred dollars. And I'm looking at this like, okay, really guys, I, I, this is, I think, maybe now, yeah.
Oh, Jesus.
What, two hundred dollar budget? We got certain people make more than that inside, but she's got an entire office. And, and these are work that she has to do. And she's elected, she could, she could, she ain't gotta do it that way. I see it for them, like, she don't gotta do it that way. She doesn't have to maintain the prior lifestyle, the prior existence, the prior practice, no, she's elected. If the public wants to change that, then they get it, but I'm not gonna get into that. My job, my job was simply, it's gonna ask, will I, will I approve these people to make sure that she had on demand to be able to come in there and help and perhaps pick up a body? Get it where it needs to go, it's a hundred seventy-five dollars a person or trip or transfer or investigation, it's like, yeah, it's like, yeah, really? Think about, I thought the same standard, help every, all thousand people, that same standard that, that we're establishing, let's, let's, let's be consistent, uh-huh. When, when it comes down to the awarding of stuff, let's be consistent, mhm. We'll come back to that though. Because again, this is, I, I appreciate that, that, yeah, that, that, the change, I, 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 I get it. And, and to that point, the eloquence and the exacting, it's like, okay, I'm with you, one hundred. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna finish up on this, this is, I personally think that, no, it's not thinking, we need to pay our bills. If these people have rendered services, let's get this queued up. Um, I, I'm wondering like, well, why do we have to go through this? I mean, don't we have contracts and things in our purchase order that, that, but they're just for services rendered? Now, I get that there's certain cases that they've been sworn in, I'm gonna let that go, but I just simply wanna pay our bills. Now, it's up to my, my fellow commissioners if you want to, as far as going forward, on demand, right? Uh, and as far as flex up, I have no problem against that. Um, I, because again, what, what got introduced was a whole just judgment of the office versus, okay, but that's not the ask. The ask was simply, can I get three or four people to help me on an on-demand situation, deal with sort of this, 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 you know, I may need them, I may not need them, and if it's on-demand, it's on, on-service, then that's really the ask. All of this other stuff, all that, okay, that would pass that, passed. Like, go, go back to seventeen. All right, we, we, we went through that cycle. So, with that, that, I, I, I know this has been, we've been waiting for this conversation. So we knew it was coming, so I, unfortunately, we're, we're politicizing, uh, uh, our, perhaps legitimate ask, I, I need support. I'm, I'm gonna come back to the conversation where the administration, wh- wh- when they say, well, it's not my job to help her. I resent that. And I don't apologize for that statement.
You were nuts.
Uh-huh.
You were absolutely.
Right, it, it, it's the atmosphere that we're creating, it's, it's time to move on, Douglas County, this, this, you're, you're trying to isolate this elected official and you're, you're, you're circling her, not, I resent it.
Uh.
It's ongoing, it's like, it's picking, it's, it's long, isn't it? Just, look, look at what's happening, like, in our, like, come on, guys, back that up, 'cause I can use the same, ooh. Really? And we're creating this facade, people like, well, what's, like, okay, really? It's, 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 it's over the top. Now I could get the same thing to that parquet, oh, I could, just, why am I that guy, the executioner? Oh, please. I can use that same way, some same language against, oh, now. And I'm listening to this, and I'm listening to this, like, okay, let that go, but okay, I can get, hey, look, I get the First Amendment, it go both ways.
What are you talking about?
No sense, I get it. So, that being said, um, I, I've made my peace on where I'm at with this, Madam Chair. I asked that this go ahead and be put up on the next, um, voting meeting to be stewed by, you know, each commissioner to take their position respectfully. But I think we, we did talk about this at the retreat, I think it came up. Uh, for those who were not there, um, at our, our constitutional and state officials elected officer retreat last week or a couple weeks ago, uh, it did come up in, in, in sort of a, a, a public meeting. Um, and this is just sort of now it's coming before the official board commissioners for a vote. And so I asked that, that it continue on for consideration, that it'll be up or down, yes or no? Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Okay, okay, you have a comment on the, on the board? Your correct, uh, Vice Chair, we will take the position on Thursday. Uh, be mindful that our, our meeting is Thursday, Board of Commissioners, instead of tomorrow, which is Tuesday.
Madam Chair, I've got my hand up.
Oh, I, I didn't see your hand on, oh, there you are, at the bottom, Commissioner Guyer. See, it's a little different on the phone, I can't see it.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm back on teams. But anyway, uh.
Okay.
I want to remind this board, she broke the law, she put this county in legal jeopardy because she, they were doing investigations, they had not been sworn in. They had not been bonded as required by state law. They were probably driving our county vehicles, they were not even on the payroll. So if they'd had an accident, guess who would have been sued? This county, we have got to hold her responsible. Forget about two thousand seventeen, I'll forget about two thousand seventeen. If Commissioner, uh, Robinson will forget about the jail, how many times did he bring up the jail? Block. So, let's, let's just go from two thousand twenty, to, I mean, twenty-twenty, okay? She hired them in March without telling us, without having them sworn in, without bonding them. They were doing things representing the county and they weren't on the payrolls. That is a legal issue that we as commissioners should all be concerned about. 'Cause she's dragging us into, uh, things that we had no knowledge of. And it's our, that is our job, we're supposed to oversee the welfare of this county. So, uh, if we go along with this, then we have become part of it. And with that, I yield back.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Guyder. I have a few questions for you, Coroner, I believe you indicated that there are vendor applications out there, such as the previous administration had vendor applications for their coroner, there's no such things as contracts for the previous administration. This is something that pivoted or moved into our administration, and I just have a question for the coroner. Do they have vendor applications on file, and what was your process? And if you could just explain that too? Just give me some clarity.
Yes, they do have vendor's application on file, that was done before they started working. Um, with, with the, the, uh, app, the contracts that we have, there were, there were never any contracts before I came to office, it started when I came into office. Um, and I would, I would like to say to Commissioner Guyder, please respect me and don't put out false accusations about me, about doing something illegal. If you would read Title forty-five, it says that I can, as the coroner, the elected official can swear, swear my own deputy coroner's in. Yes, they have been sworn in, yes, they have taken their classes to drive vehicles in Douglas County. If you don't do research on me and you want to file open records, please get all your facts straight before you come online saying what I don't have and what I have did, because one thing I have not done is violated the law.
But the probate judge says he has not bonded him.
No, they have not been bonded because we are waiting for them to go through the orientation. And as far as the number, the probate judge would not have the number that I have because everybody does not have their death certificate designated from the funeral hall. There are also hospitals that sign their own death certificate and we do the investigation.
Okay.
And you also, and we also have cases at GBI that we're, we can't do death certificates on. So the probate number would be different from our number. And I've never said that twenty seventeen had under death, that is untrue.
If, if I hear you correctly, uh, coroner, for Thursday, Jesse Flemmons will, uh, he's replacing Chantel Fleming, so that's a replacement.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it the other three or two, you mentioned two?
It's three. It's, what, it, it, it's three.
Okay.
It's three, but only for backup only.
Backup, and, and that, that was a question I had for our, uh, county attorney, I know this contract thing is, is, is become a legacy with this administration. And we're the only, uh, really county in the state of Georgia right now, is my understanding, that have contracts for, for, uh, coroners, but we won't, you know, we'll discuss that at a later time. Um, these are backup folks, like in surgery, we have a backup call list in case something goes wrong with the staff that's already in place. Because we are dealing with life and death, uh, with this, this, the bottom line is death. So, a, a backup call list is simply saying to me, these, these staff members will be utilized in the event that the people that you have on staff now, such as your current deputy coroners, only in that particular time, maybe somebody going on vacation, somebody's sick, somebody you may need some additional lifting help, you may have a multi-car accident, you may have a catastrophic disaster with airplanes coming down, anything of that matter. They just simply as a backup, is that correct, coroner?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I just wanted to have my facts before I take a position tomorrow, Thursday. So if there's no further discussion from Board of Commissioners, coroner, we appreciate your time and we look forward to, uh, taking this matter from Thursday. We're going to move on, Board of Commissioners, let's go on to tab number seventeen, it's authorization to approve a change order number one. Order number one in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. And that's a decrease, something on a positive note, on the contract with Prime Foundation, uh, LLC for construction for the Chestnut Log Middle School Sidewalks Project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentin, could you share, uh, with the Board of Commissioners about this savings?
Certainly, uh, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, we were able on this project to adjust the quantities in the field and make some modifications that reduce the amount of curb that we were required to install uh, by doing some regrading, so that resulted in a savings in, in the contract. Uh, the project is fairly far along and we anticipate that we should be able to complete the project with, uh, without any additional changes.
Any questions from the Board of Com, or comments? Pretty straightforward, we'll move on to tab number eighteen, authorization to approve the change order number one in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. And this is another decrease on the contract with the Corporate Group LLC for the construction of the Turner, Turner Middle School Sidewalks Project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Valentin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, very similar i- in nature, adjusting the quantities out in the field, uh, making the modification to eliminate a retaining wall, uh, by doing some regrading in the field, that resulted in, in this savings in this particular contract.
Okay. Any questions from the Board?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, I, I'll, the previous question, current one, Miguel Lindon, I'm just, just sort of, uh, tie it together. So sidewalks, which is purpose splotch. And I was having a conversation with, um, David Good, and by the way, put him on our official, um, transportation committee, um, just as a, a visitor, Miguel. But this is related, because I try to line these up, so you've got this splotch and we've got a capital, a comprehensive transportation plan. Are sidewalks part of the comprehensive transportation plan, Miguel, or is it just truly big roads and bridges and stuff? Can you give us some insight, I'm, I'm trying to plan for the future?
Yes, sidewalks are part of the comprehensive plan because they, they address all the different modes of transportation, including pedestrians. Uh, however, there, there isn't a, a real comprehensive inventory of existing sidewalks in the county. Uh, they will be taking a look at that and, uh, it is an element that we will look at and perhaps there would be recommendations for additional sidewalks in some areas, particularly if there are either schools or other centers of activity that, uh, that would want to.
Right, and so, again, I'm, I'm just setting expectations of, we're not suggesting complying or there's no innuendo that we're going to go back and re-sidewalk everything. Sometimes you can't go backwards, all right? And, and so to your point, you, you're going to have some gaps, right? And Miguel, to your point, I think we're, um, are, and I, and I know, um, um, Ron Roberts will acknowledge with our UDC and everything, our, our development code will get everything going full. We'll have sidewalks where sidewalk needs to be, where, where it comes to development, it'll be going forward. What we're trying to do is strategically retrofit, is that, is that true about safe passages, Miguel? Parks, schools, uh, to your point, um, shopping, is that a proper way to, to frame this, Miguel?
Yes, yes, Commissioner, uh, centers of activity that, that are, have gaps in the sidewalk, uh, and so we would look to improve connectivity. There are a lot of different locations throughout the county that could be retrofit. Um, and so it will be looked into and, uh, there would be some recommendations as to some of those locations being prioritized for retrofitting this side.
And, and so again, um, I'm just going to drop home to that point that there is a comprehensive transportation plan, there are stakeholders, um, that are in play. Um, and, and so citizen input, input is important. Obviously, um, the sidewalk project that you speak of came out of town halls that, that are involved in, and I obviously got them on the list, advocating for that. Um, but, but likewise, that's just me being in the moment and hearing the needs, but sometimes you can take a step back and think long-term, right? So, we're talking about for the next three, five years, well, let, let, let's, let's, let's not act in the moment. Let, let's be strategic about how we're looking about our county, and so I, I, I conclude this is, have you got all representation from, um, the various district, um, commissioners, Miguel, to, 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 to round out this comprehensive transportation plan, stakeholder committee? Because the last thing I would want is any of my peers to miss out giving input during this process. And I know you've got to keep this moving, we've got consultants that are on the grid, and I'm not looking for you to call out, but do you have a hundred percent, Miguel?
I, I do, yes, Commissioner, I have a hundred percent, uh, representation.
Awesome. All right, so we're all set and locked and loaded, so you're going to keep that moving then, right? And make sure the people, and when is the next meeting? I know you said you kicked off or sort of broke the initial, but we're moving, tell us about that real quick.
Yes, the, the next, the next meeting of the committee will probably be early next year. Uh, so, so we anticipate having meetings, uh, quarterly, uh, so it'd be early next year.
Early next year, and, and at some point, you're going to come back for the Board of Commissioners to give a formal, where are we? And how long is this assignment supposed to last, eighteen months, or how long will it take them?
It's a total of fifteen months, and so we will be making periodic, uh, presentations to the Transportation Committee.
Yep.
And then, uh, to the full board, uh, once we get far enough along in the process.
All right, so perhaps fifteen months plus this give or take October, November, December, that puts us, what, at twenty twenty-two? I did that right, and so, all things being equal, so going into the twenty-two, uh, twenty twenty-two budget, there may be some type of strategic, like, there's planning, right? In other words, this plan will give us something about the next four to five years, is that accurate?
Well, this, this plan, uh, the, the comprehensive transportation plan
Ten years?
looks at, uh, the future thirty years from now. So it will have recommendations, and it particularly along major corridors, uh, up to the year twenty fifty. Now, this, this, uh, comprehensive plan, the goal is to have it updated every five years or so. And the last time it was updated was, um, going on eleven years, so we are past through having a revisit of, of the plan. But the long-range planning will be to the year twenty fifty. There will be recommendations in the short term, uh, three to five years, and then midterm, five to ten years as well.
Right, so we're laying down the plans, we're, we're laying down the, the Thornton Road for the future. Right, so decisions I make thirty years from now, since I've been here thirty years, the decisions we make is going to take care of that generation that's going like, okay, no, how did I get this Google and this switch and six data centers? And I, I know that they wouldn't have nothing to do with this. All right, I get it, that's how important this is, this, this has nothing to do with us being able to realize in the current moment, fellow commissioners. Just the same benefit that we got to, we got to cast for the future. And so I look forward to the input that comes out, it's, because, you know, politics, sometimes you get caught up in what, what you get out of your current moment, but it shouldn't be about you, be about the future and, and the great good of the whole of the county. And, um, y'all are going to really need this, um, citizens and, and those youngsters that are paying attention, that will, uh, obviously, hold our seats in the future. Uh, we're going to leave you something to work for, uh, work with as a legacy, that, that, okay, can we, can we get one decision right? Can we all five of us get on the same page, at least get that future right? Can, can we leave them something that's, that's like, like, that, that they didn't have to ask for, it just showed up and it was like, boom, like, we got on that Thornton Road. Like, we couldn't have asked for a better hand, it's like, we couldn't have earned that hand. Whoever was thirty years before us and made that decision, they put that fiber in, that dark fiber, that put us in place, get four point five billion out the pocket. So let's, 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 let's just get that one right, like, I, 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 I get the politics, and I, I get guys, but can we just get this one right? So Miguel, I ask you to keep us on task, your wisdom, your experience here at the table is going to matter. And so I want you to think holistically, to sort of like, you know, put the politics aside, let's just do what's in the great good of the whole. And let's lay down a good, uh, comprehensive transportation plan, deals with all elements of mobility and carry us forward. So, that's your charge, you don't have to respond, but I think you get it, Madam Chair, I'm going to yield the floor, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. All right, we're going to move on to tab number nineteen, authorization to approve change order number two in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents on the contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC for construction of the Baker's Bridge Sweetwater Church High Point Doris Road Intersection Improvement and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentin again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, this particular project is, is pretty far along, we anticipate within the next few weeks, two, two weeks, three maximum, it would be a hundred percent completed. Uh, we, uh, found that, uh, we needed to patch the pavement, the existing pavement, uh, uh, within the intersection that was not anticipated as part of the contract. Um, some of it may have been, uh, deterioration in the pavement over time that was not picked up during the design. Uh, but in essence, it, it added, uh, uh, to, to the contract, this unfortunately is not a D doc, but, uh, uh, also, there is a change to add some sod, based on the time of the year. It was felt that, that it would be appropriate, uh, to, once we are done with the project, that, that, um, the surface would be covered and we would not be dealing potentially erosion issues. Uh, so, uh, again, the project is pretty far along, within the next couple of weeks, it should be complete.
Okay, thank you, any questions from the Board? All right, we'll move on to tab number twenty, which is our last tab for today. Authorization to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Douglasville for reimbursement to the county in the amount of three thousand four hundred and eighty dollars in costs to be incurred for signal timing monitoring during the twenty twenty holiday season in the vicinity of the Arbor Place Mall for intersections under city jurisdiction. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, this, this item, we typically, uh, enter into this agreement every year. Uh, we're actually looking at additional intersections, uh, than in previous years this time around, uh, because of issues that have come up with progression of traffic. Uh, so, uh, we also anticipate that, uh, perhaps the shopping season will not be as active within the mall itself because of, uh, less people shopping in person. Uh, but the patterns are still going to be here and the issues are still going to develop, so, um, this particular contract is, is actually less than half of what it had been previously. And, uh, this, the city has agreed, or they're also considering the, the agreement to reimburse the county for half of it. So, a little less than seven thousand dollar total, uh, for monitoring, some of the monitoring is going to be done by in-house forces as well, uh, during the day. And so, um, the city will pick up fifty percent of the contract, a little less than thirty-five hundred dollars.
Any questions from the Board? Pretty self-explanatory, thank you so much, Director Valentin.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, all of your hard work. Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else, nor other comments this time, I will certainly, uh, move to our county administrator to check to see if there's a need for, uh, executive session, county administrator.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Miss a comment real quick?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be quick. From a finance committee perspective, Director Holman, are you out there?
Yes, yes, sir, I am.
All right, Director Holman, we just came out of a Constitutional, um, Officer slash State Electoral Official Retreat. And we're, and, and I know simultaneously or concurrently, we're about to move into our, um, the Board of Commissioners, um, um, budget cycle where it comes before us, can you lay out the timeline, go back to this morning, please? Just lay out the timeline that we expect to anticipate over the next, I guess we got four meetings, give or take, can you talk to us?
Yes, sir. Um, the budget retreat via teams, it's going to be virtual, of course, um, it's scheduled for next Thursday, November the twelfth, and next Friday, November the thirteenth. Uh, that is where we will be presenting the, uh, twenty twenty-one recommended budget, um, as well as going over some of our fiscal control policies, financial policies, tweaking those up, um, getting those, um, updated. Uh, I've been speaking with David Corbin regarding that as well. Um, but after the retreat, um, via teams on the twelfth and thirteenth of next week of November, uh, what usually happens is, uh, we have a budget hearing, we're required to have one budget hearing. Um, and that is usually the first meeting in December, which this year would be December first, because that's the first Tuesday of the month. Uh, that would be the, uh, budget hearing, uh, open to the public to, uh, we'll give a short presentation regarding what was discussed at the retreat, um, and present the FY twenty-one budget at that time. Then, um, after the budget hearing, at the next scheduled regular commission meeting on the fifteenth, uh, is when we are scheduled or looking at, uh, adopting the FY twenty-one budget.
All right, so, now, thank you, uh, Director Holman, so, so, again, this is more of the general, general information, um, as we move into, um, in, in light of our current, um, um, what's happening in, in America and the broader, um, global perspective. um what's happening in in America and the broader um global perspective. Um sometimes we forget about where where we at. Um this is our normal budget process. Um and so Director Holman, I heard you say it's just a single public hearing that's required, which is we've always done that. My next question is because we're looking at our fiscal policy and and this is something, as you guys know, I'm sponsoring and I'm advocating this legislation, that that um do we, is it, it's not an ordinance that requires public hearings. Is that true? Or is it a a policy, our fiscal policy can be adopted just upon a single meeting? Please clarify that for us.
That is correct. Uh any updates to our current financial policies? Um can, uh of course, we'll run through committee, our finance committee. Um and then we would be presenting um those to the full board at um a future meeting this year.
Alright, so to to that point, um I I do plan on um introducing at our retreat um a draft of legislation for you guys, way and my fellow peers. Um I, as you know, you're inputting support to me regarding our fiscal policy and then we'll work with the administration, Director Holman and 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 Madam Chair and and Corbin, um our financial advisors sort of refine this as we always do. So that's a process. So we we got that. So um simultaneously as we go through this, I know we were looking at, uh and maybe the county administrator can answer this, but Director Holman, I know um in our procurement committees, uh I I know as as Vice Chair, I know there had been uh a desire to look at um contracts and all of our contracts and stuff. So do we think that we'll get input going into this cycle? Or if we may not be able to? Because I think that the intent, the goal was look at, based on the military conversation, all contracts and where we can find opportunity, whether it it's employment contracts or whether they're service contracts or what we just talked about right now. Will we have a chance to be able to do that during this period? Do we think we're gonna get input from our consultants? PDG?
Yes, sir. Um we have them scheduled to present on the twelfth.
Okay, alright, they're gonna be at the retreat. Okay, great. Alright, so they'll be at our retreat, so we'll get that feedback. So um um okay, so that that's on the twelfth. That's, what's that, Thursday? Wait, I got to do that right. That's.
I think they're actually scheduled on the thirteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, they're scheduled on the second day, which is the thirteenth.
Alright, they're on the second day. Um but um anything that they present to us, will you have a chance to incorporate it into the budget? Like any learning that?
Yes, hopefully we will be able to. They won't be entirely finished. Uh this is a long process.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Process that will take months.
It may be a quick win or something.
Should have some information.
Alright, that that that's fair enough. And I I won't press that point, which um I I wanna come back to the earlier conversation. Um we we talked about judicial. Um we've got judgment plane, which is more a longer term. We may have to consider housing and and again, anticipating. Well, Director Holman, I don't know if you were at the constitutional retreat or not, but we do have a new probate judge and I think consistent with this coroner, let's, let's be proactive and make sure that there's support there, but understanding as they on board, as you have these new electeds that the system must be able to accommodate, not leave you out there to figure out, but let's accommodate this new probate judge if we know that we need to have space for it. They may need to have a team. Uh and and so it's something that we're not used to transition of 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 leadership. But let's, let's make this one way more smooth. And I know that we can do this. So I I I want to make sure that that, I I wanna see that probate judge inside the budget being presented to us, not as an amendment after the fact, as if I didn't think about this. We were told this, that like, no, y'all, we about to drop this on this judge. It's like, and it's not you, Director Holman, but it was, it was like, okay, well, you now have to absorb some responsibility that was shuffled out of the other places. No, by the way, you gotta have this. And you, it's like, okay, I I I see somebody get ahead of this. I don't want this to be a mess. Um and and so I I again, sometimes, and 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 this is the part where I I it's unfortunate with the coroner. They're like, okay, guys, but it shouldn't have been, like, but where's the the support? It it it's so, it's fatalistic. It's so, it it it's the harshness. It's like, well, where's the support? I thought we were all neighbors. I thought we were all like, okay, it's your turn. Okay, we did it. But it it wants to be exacting. It it wants to be like, this is like, alright, really? You know, that that goes both ways, right? Without fear, it goes both ways. And I I just think that we can do better. And I challenge any of y'all to go look at that state of the county, like, no, we, we can do better than this. It's some of this narrative. I mean, I get that it it's supposed to be adversarial to a certain extent. You wanna argue, debate the points, but but not against the person. I mean, this, this is so just mental. It's like, ooh, it go both ways now. It's like, well, you know, all that because it'll, 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 it'll implode. We'll, we'll destroy ourselves. I mean, we ain't been here in that, but what? In all time, we ain't been here number two seconds? And it's like, ah man, I just think the hardest of the people just, I pray that we can get through this moment. Not just talk about praying. I know separate too, but don't, don't just, don't, don't come in here with the fake prayers. Like, no, guys, you know this is not a God. This, this is, this is ruthless that we would do our neighbors. And it's just, it's the language, okay? If you miss it, I understand. Hold them accountable. I get that. But we're talking about the tone and overlay that, no, I've been here long enough to know that this is over the top. It is mean. It's like, well, you know that go both ways, right? And it's like, okay, ease up. Focus on the process. Focus on the problem. But ease up off the, 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 the personal. We can do better. It 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 shows that, well, where's the mental sense? And you can rise up and like, you don't have to be so low. Like, okay, show that you're like, okay, come on, guys, it doesn't have to be that. Like communicate. Show that we're a balanced society, that we're not attacking our own, that in our own sense. We could just do better. I just, that that pains my heart to have to weigh in on this. But you know, I I have to because I I I have the right to defend. First amendment, then there's the second amendment. You got the right to defend yourself, but it's like, come on, back up. What are you talking about? Ease up, down, 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 everybody down, everybody down. Alright, Madam Chair, you're welcome.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Robinson. Okay, Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, you'll need executive session for real estate and personnel today. And I'll defer to Mark about the sequence.
Okay, thank you so much, Attorney Bernard. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So, so second.
We have a motion in a second, in a discussion. We have a motion in a second. I'm gonna call you District, please respond accordingly. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes ma'am.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Chairman? Yes, we have a five oh unanimous vote and the motion carries. We are, Mark, you'll take it from here and we'll wait until you tell us what to do next. County Administrator?
Yes ma'am. So close out this meeting and if everyone that's uh supposed to be attending executive session, just keep your Microsoft Teams up and we'll call you in one at a time. Until we have everybody. That's it.
So we stay live?
No, close out this meeting, we'll call you in the next one.
So you want us to leave, um but?
Yes ma'am, just like, just like always.
Press the telephone, yes, okay.
And we are live.
Alright, thank you so much TJ and thank you to the citizens of Douglas County for your patience. Our executive session has ended. Our Board of Commissioners, do you have any announcements or anything to come forth uh before this session ends today? Okay, there's nothing else to come before this Board of Commissioners. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.